I reached out to the ALDOT, they didn't realize we didn't already have one. So they've stepped up and wanted to put in some new place in this as a maintenance agreement. It's kind of like what we do with a red light or a traffic light signal lights here in town. It's an agreement, you know, saying that we'll maintain the fees dollars. I need to ask for motion for us to sign this maintenance agreement. It's good for the school system. Next item on the agenda is theater board vacancy. Mary, have you got a recommendation for it?
I did, of course, you all know the loss that we have with Don. But we do need to replace, his term actually expired next year in September of 24. So we want to ask you to appoint Kevin Garner to our board. He's been volunteering with us for about, I guess, the last year, the entire last season. And he's real knowledgeable about sound and lights. He's actually done New Year Day sound for several years. But he's really interested, he likes what we have and what we're trying to do at the theater. And we really like him, so that's our recommendation, if y'all could appoint him to fill Don's term.
Based on the board recommendation, I would want Kevin Garner to finish filling Don's position on the board. Jane made motion, Jane Hall in favor. The next item on the agenda is Farm Grove Road. I had mentioned to the council about, I had mentioned to the council about Tiffin on Farm Grove Road, wanting to put a security type gate from the middle guardhouse. There's three guardhouses, one where you come off 118 right across the railroad track. And the other one's at the intersection of Harvest and Farm Grove Road, the intersection right there at the main parking lot. And then the other one is Farm Grove back down toward County Road 31, I think it's 31th Road. Basically, it's going to be kind of just like, I'm taking it, it's going to be basically like what they've got at that already on Farm Grove. Other end, they want to do it at this end at the intersection of the building with the building. It won't interfere with Harvest Forest, Harvest going straight through. And during the day, the way I understand it, which Gina, I think, went back and talked to Mr. Massey today, it's going to be open through the day for as you, through traffic that comes through in the day. It's mainly for after hours to where they can kind of get a better control of those six, seven, or chassis they've got sitting out there. Do you have anything that you want?
No, I mean, what he showed me today is not going to interfere with any traffic that normally goes through there, people who live back there.
So, you know, based on them being here and located here and the investment that they've made and the jobs they provide for the city, it's my recommendation, council would let them put a security gate there. I need to ask for motion to do that. Jane, Jane Hall in favor. Resolution number 1335, ALDOT title, what is going to be probably this much more. This is going to do with Susan.
It's when we write that grant for the bus, this is completing the last final process of the grant, from the way I understand it, is there's got to agree this resolution that they give us the money and we agree to maintain the bus to manufacture recommendations and all that stuff. And my understanding is it's like the final step in that grant.
Resolution number 1335, resolution adopting Title VI program. Whereas City Winfield receives a federal financial assistance from the Alabama Department of Transportation to support transit vehicle which possessed imposes certain obligations upon the recipient, including complying with the Title VI federal requirements. Whereas Title VI of the Civil Rights Act 1964 prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, and national order in programs and activity receiving federal financial assistance. Whereas City Winfield commits to assure that no person shall, on the grounds of race, of color, or national order sector as provided by Title VI of the Civil Rights Act 1964 and Civil Rights Restoration Act 1987, be excluded from participation and denied in the benefits of otherwise subject to discrimination under any program or activity regardless of the funding source. So it pretty much says that we're going to follow the federal guidelines as far as race, order, not discriminate. I need to ask for motion to accept this resolution, sign this resolution for the transit bus thing at the community center. Resolution 1335. Jane made motion, Kim Say Hall in favor. Since we got you on the spot right here, can you tell us how the program's going while we got you in here? How is your meals and support for the program?
Going real good, I'm having between 20 and 25 most days eat. We're doing 57 homebound, I've got three receiving frozen. And then we're distributing 30 roughly of the food boxes from the West Alabama Food Bank. What I'm up against right now is due to federal cuts that NACOG is facing. Anybody that comes off my program, I cannot replace them.
Because before we were trying to build the program.
Yeah, I've worked my talent out to build it and now they're saying, nope, no more.
So where you're at now is all you have?
All, for right now, but no, that's been, it's because of federal cuts. And if any, like if I lose anybody on my frozen meals, I can't replace them. And I've had like three or four people come in since Christmas wanting me to put people on and I can't. And it all comes back to some federal cuts they've received.
These, the people that's asking to be put on it, I would assume that they would pass whatever the requirements are to be homebound.
I'm going to be honest with you, yes, I assumed they would. I didn't go far enough to ask them because I knew, you know, I talked, just flat out told them, I can't put them on. So we didn't go any further in the conversation.
Who you guys might get the monthly cost from that year?
I'm sorry?
What do you think the monthly cost per person is on that?
I can tell you what they spend per plate is right around $2.
So you're talking about $60 a month on the frozen food?
No, that's for the hot meals, it's roughly $2. I could have told you, it was bided out five years ago. And I could have told you then exactly what it was, but I don't remember now, but it was right at $2 that they are allowed to spend per plate.
Even on the frozen?
I don't know about on the frozen, I'm just know that's on the line.
Well, you may know that's not going to say the part of the industry, even if you're not allowed to add anybody to the program, if anybody goes off the program. Now may I ask, if why would somebody go off the program? Just ceased to move? Pretty much the only, if you had anybody join, then get off the program.
I have had some that get on it and just call me and say, I don't, I'm not happy with this, I don't want it anymore. It don't happen often, but I do occasionally have that happen. Most people financially just need the help so bad, they're glad to have it. They're physically not able to cook, you know, and that's on the homebound, that's the thing about it, you know, they, either it's finance, transportation, physically can't stand and cook, they don't have the supports, people they need to get it. And so most of them, once they get it, they're tickled to death that they've got a hot meal there every day.
What's the requirements to be qualified for assistance?
For the homebound, you have to be exactly that homebound. Whether that means, like I've just said, no transportation, you're not physically able to stand and cook, things like that.
But you have had, you have had to turn homebound people, though.
Yes, I've had to turn, I've had three people come in since Christmas wanting me to put people on, family members on, and I just tell them, I can't.
Well, after that, you let them wait, they just wait? But is there an application that they had to fill out?
After I put on, after I realized that they're, when we've got openings, yes.
Would it be improper for her to let them fill out an application for us to try to get assistance for them? If you get anybody else to come in, go ahead and let them fill out an application. If you can't, bring it in to me or give it, bring it into my office or give it to Mike, when let us, let us, let me. I don't, I don't think we need to, as long as homebound haven't tried to get a meal, I don't think that they need to be denied because the government's cut it off.
I agree, I totally agree with you. That's the one aspect I hate about my job, is to look at somebody that I know is needing the food and going, sorry, I can't.
Do you know who got to do it?
They won't add no more.
Couldn't eat both of them?
NACOG sends me, I get 82 meals a day, and they won't send me anything else besides that. And that's like, during COVID, when I was closed, we would pick up or would fix everything like a homebound meal, even if our toddler. And some of the centers have kept people on as pickups when we weren't supposed to. And they've even told us that if, we can't do that anymore, we can't even let, which I had cut out my mouth. They told me, you've either got to come to the center or you've got to be put on homebound. And most of mine, at that point, said, well, we just don't want it because we don't want to come in and, you know, where they lived, we can't serve them homebound. But they've even told that we can't do that anymore. That's what Mike had asked if it could leave as a, I'm going to use you for example. Let's say you came and ate, and Tandy was not able to get out and come, so you took her, wouldn't want to take her plate. Now, I can't let you do that. Does that make sense?
Is that, so is that what you're calling to, is a, you know, and would you ever do that before?
During COVID, well, everybody was picking up during COVID. But no, they, some of the centers have been, still been doing that, but they've told us, no, can't do that.
It's kind of, I mean, I don't know if that, have they cut out what all they were doing for the food, for the free lunches, you know, when they had virtual classes, they still had lunches.
Well, you know, that was when the federal government was providing free food for all children. That's no longer the case. Now, if they qualify for free or reduced lunches, they still get it, but all children don't get that anymore.
If you will, how do you fill out?
I know one of the ladies well, well enough, that I can get back in touch with her and say, hey, let's get that filled out. The mayor has requested I do this. The other lady, I'll see if I can get ahold of her too. Let me add this to you, to ask how the program was doing, we installed the Kiel in July. And we've done really well with it, I've got the numbers at work, I can give you, I, it was unreal, the amount of Christmas trees I sold. Turkeys and pumpkins, and we painted and sold through our Kiel program, through the grant that I went through RCND. And I'm getting ready to start stuff for the spring.
Explain the frozen meal to me, what's the term?
The frozen meals is a box of seven meals, like titty dinners. And everything in that box, there's everything in that box to make a hot nutritious meal. And you get seven half pints of milk to go with it. And this, this is my call label.
But it's on the same guy behind this, every?
Yes.
So a homebound person can get a frozen meal?
I have some people, my frozen meals typically, I do, like I have got a lady that lives over on the, where the Rock Plant Road is, over Rock City, I don't know what that county road is that goes through. When you, she lives on that road, and when you come out of her driveway, if you look to the right, you can see the Walker County sign. She's too far out for us to serve, because she's in Marion County, Carbon Hill won't serve her. So I've got a lady that comes and gets her box of frozen every week and takes care, she has no transportation, she's not able to come get it. I've got another situation, the same lady does a guy like that in Wayside, he's not able to come to the center. My frozen meals are typically for people who live so far out that we can't serve them.
How many do you got?
Three. And they get that once a week.
You've been having to turn anybody down, you have stopped anybody on that program?
I have had one lady that I did stop. The reason I stopped her is technically she was not meeting the guidelines. I was seeing her a lot in Walmart, I'll just be honest with you about it. If she's able to go to Walmart. She, now when we first put it on it, her husband was at home, bed bound, she was having to take care of him. She was at home a lot, but since he has passed away, she's outgoing a lot. And I told her, I said, you know, really, you can come in and eat with us. And I, she said, and she did say, she said, I need to start doing that. But now she hasn't yet, I'm hoping maybe she will.
Yeah, before she gets kicked off the program?
Well, we took her off last week.
Well, did you add her back?
Oh, yeah, yeah, if she would come to the center and eat, I can add her back.
You just can't take on nobody else?
Just can't take on nobody?
Nobody to take her place?
No.
If you will, just get.
But you can add her back?
If she'll come to the center and eat.
Nobody can take her place?
On homebound. Yeah.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure I understand, can anybody still come in the center and eat?
That's my understanding, that we can still add plates at the center, just no more homebound and.
Homebound, so that's why she still can come to the center, because it's still open?
Yes, I'm still open. And I still.
What's the, what's the requirements to be able to come to the center and eat?
Just got to be 60 years old?
No matter what income?
No. None of this program is based on age. None of it, only on age.
It's probably next month.
I would love to see you for lunch, didn't you? Right, start a couple months.
Years for me.
Oh, okay.
At least four.
I'm just trying to figure out how we can serve homebound if coming to, if they can come to the center. We can add, we can add hot plates, come into the center, we can't add on homebound.
That's what I understand.
I understand that, but.
Yeah, you can at the center. Yeah, you can at the center, no, I mean, homebound.
But if homebound had transportation, they wouldn't be homebound, but you could bring, but you could bring them to the center and they could eat.
If somebody wanted to bring them, yes, because, let me use this for an example.
You can't, you can't, but you can't, with your bus, you can't pick them up and bring them?
I don't have time, because she has served fifty-seven, she's taken fifty-seven meals out. And, um, that was my idea when we got the bus, but we got so many homebonds, that it's not the getting them there, it's the getting them home, is where the issue is. Because she has taken out fifty-seven meals, and it's taken her two routes to there.
But, I'm saying this because I want this to get out there, but, if you had to turn somebody down on homebound, because you can't add to, or if you lose somebody. If that person had transportation to the center.
Yes.
They can get that meal.
Yes.
And you can add plates all you want to.
My understanding is I can add plates on homebound, yes.
There's your workaround, you get them there. Well, I understand that, but that's your workaround.
And I've even got a situation, like, where a lady, her daughter is off every Wednesday, and they like to do stuff on Wednesday. Well, sometimes the daughter just comes to the center with her, and the daughter is a volunteer that day. I say at the end day, we will add tables for me, and I can feed her because she volunteers in the center that day. And she's not old enough, because she's younger than I am.
Todd, I know what I need you to do.
I'll get working.
Uh, we, if you remember, we took and, we go, we've been back, attached basically to it three times about the pumping station, where we agreed to use three hundred, three seventy-five, I don't know, three hundred thousand of the CARES Act money for whatever Angie wants to call it. I don't know, it's gotten four or five years now, but y'all know a lot of time out in the federal, for the pumping station. Water Department's engineers have brought Todd up to speed on a bit on it, can you tell us what we're looking at, Todd?
Yeah, hey, we're looking at, at two pumping stations and, uh, maybe even, uh, a little bit of water line, increase the line for that, for that money. He's giving me a, a list together today, after being waiting today, he's giving me a list together that's gonna give me pretty much everything they can do for the, for that dollar amount. And that's what I'm going to include in the agreement that we're.
That's spec.
Specifies the work that they will do, it's not just, you know, the agreement was about, we'll be responsible for the money if there's a payback, but this is gonna specify, it's gonna tell the city what work they're getting for that money before we do it. So it's gonna specify the exact scope of the work that will be done for that money.
Yeah, that'd be good, because, I mean, if we know what they are doing, and, you know, if it makes sure it's what we want, if, I mean, if it, if it was to take a few more dollars, the council, you know, if it served a bigger purpose than what they're gonna be able to do for the dollar amount, we might, maybe, if we cut the age, maybe. But we're gonna need, we always gonna need water. And if we, you know, we, like, we've been talking about before, we've got issues with not having enough housing now, and the more housing you add, the more water you're gonna need for those housing, and same way with industry, so, you know, it's a win, win if we can put things into place while we've got more money to go with. Todd, do you have any other things? So, maybe, I'd hope they'd be glad to hear that on that side of the city.
Yeah, I mean, so, those folks, we're, we're getting real close, because the engineers got it worked up, and so we're getting very, very close to that, to get ready to start that project. Very close.
All business, Monday next month, sorry. Where was, turn back, I can hear it. C three. We were gonna bring that up again, we're first meeting, meeting got moved, and the guy is on the meeting. Need, we need to pay the debt, my motion is pay the money. On the C three, uh, as I, I think I've stated before, that it's my recommendation to council that we stay and remember with the C three, but to support that organization to try to work with the three counties, if that, Lamar and Marion, um, in, you know, development. They've actually looking toward helping with retail. I, you know, I just don't, I mean, I just don't think it's time for us to part ways with them, I think that we need to continue to support that effort. Time to better our community. My recommendation, the council and James has made a recommendation that we stay with it, I need to ask for a second. I met, I watched him, I told him, and, uh, give him some concerns. He asked for at least one more year about some things, one or two, so I'll second it. Got a motion to second, all in favor of that. Our two officers, oh, business, our two officers stored at the cabin, uh, be graduating when, Brett?
March.
March. Brett, what, now, I've asked Brett, he's real satisfied with the work that they've been doing prior to, uh, training that they've had with, with Brett, he's well satisfied. I guess, uh, I got any other business? I need, uh, next item on justice accounts, table, I need to ask a motion to pay the bill.
I've got a question with number five on that first page.
What is, not the, what is, what is that for?
Mm-hmm.
Liquor license, I think, I was saying.
That's expensive, that's why is it expensive?
Is that a refund, you know, for what you said?
Probably, um, let me look, sometimes they put them on the same check, and we have to write it back out, or it'll go in the alcohol.
I don't think it's per, per se, given, paying them back, it's, it's paying them.
We show up on here and say the bill. We'll build the bill.
Well, it's like, it's like the police gets a, uh, check in that's for the police department, and we run it through the general fund, invite it back out to the state fund for the police department. You know, it's like, while the fire department, if they got a check comes in for the out of tax, or whatever, going to go in front of them, back out to that.
Uh, they had a grill, it says paid the business license, and they paid their alcohol tax, all in one check. So what they done was.
They chose the bill, get it up.
They had to write it out of the general plan to the alcohol proceeds plan.
That, I mean, explain some of that stuff, I mean, so, so in general fund, you had to write a check back to the alcohol. It's just like we gotta pay them, it's like we got, uh, fuel, everything pretty much goes through the general fund and back out.
Just a note, you know, now.
Yeah, to the end now, and of course.
Since we don't have a right now income, there's nothing to cross, right, which I took.
Any other questions, tell me. Play out. You got the insurance in? Let me see that insurance code. Have you got any insurance card?
Hey, I got it, yeah, he's gonna email it.
Any other questions? Are you gonna let Brett find it on his computer? Sorry. You want to discuss it? Brad, you want to come up? Uh, Jen can discuss this, uh, we're going back to the programs, I guess. Requesting one of that plan that you got there, what you'd like to seek out in the armor. Wouldn't you like to see all of it or part of it now?
I talked, uh, briefly, you know, we, we met over there, and I spoke, uh, briefly to the mayor. And the mayor just told me to get a layout of everything that I was looking at, and, uh, and try to have it here to you guys. To let you look at, see, the, what you have in front of you right now is, uh, the bay area, uh, what is the full range area, uh, just to the left, the far left, is the, uh, where we discussed having the courtroom slash city council area. And, um, all of this is one floor, uh, leaving room at the long wall, uh, right there beside the bay. Back, uh, for a complete second store, uh, for something that would need to go up above. It would just be fixing the, the downstairs, uh, to accommodate if there needed to be a, a second floor structure. No.
Everybody understand how it's laid out?
Now, where's, where's the road? In this picture, where's the road?
Yeah, that's kind of what I asked him, oh, that's probably out here.
Left side?
Right here.
Right here, at the bottom, you look.
Okay. So that's rock, where you run?
Yeah.
Across the bottom of it.
And everything, everything that's at the bottom of, of what you see is existing offices as a part. What's, what's already there, what the, the, uh, the offices that are already.
This right here.
Yes, that's just, that, that's just.
Yeah, because I got a, this.
That's right, that's right. What I told the mayor is basically what I'm, what this is here would be, what would be the cost of this thing. Uh, the only thing that would be to do in the existing office part, what, what would be the, uh, police department, would be basically just replacing the tiles in there from where they have, saving humidity, and, uh, cleaning up the floors. And putting that wall, and putting that one wall, yes, the security wall.
Actually, we could put that one security wall in there. Paint office, put new ceilings in it. And your department could move it.
That's true. Yeah, but based on, uh, yes, that, that is true.
I'd make one suggestion on that part.
Which one?
On the one that you're gonna put right there, those two offices, where you can't go in both. So you can put that wall up, the quarter still playing all across the wall, still going. If my quarter is safe, and it's still, and then she drop out of it. So somebody can't take the fist and push you right.
Yes.
Part of what, what we'll do, if the council is okay with it, the way he's got this plan laid out, part of what we'll do, we'll, we'll have a, an engineer draw this up, or maybe get a cost estimate before they, we'll see what the cost is gonna be, but we're, you're talking, you've got somebody in there in department. What part, you said, I heard you mentioned that you, that you, that your guys could do some of the work, or?
Uh, they're, they're willing to do a lot of the work there, you know, to, to try to get it. I've got some contractors, and I've got some electricians, um, that are in the department, and it'd just be working in there, you know, on their time, because mostly I've got other jobs that they work as well, but, uh, we're not talking about a long time to put up some walls, you know? The biggest thing that you would be looking at here, uh, in, in my opinion, which, I mean, it's, it's all costly now, the way lumber and everything is. Uh, the biggest issue that you would be facing here is the heat and cold.
I thought that's, that we used to do before, that upstairs, that is. Which we believe is standard in most cities. Yeah, simply have a feeling, yeah. What's, what's council thought, Tom? But we all know that they're, um, anxious to get the usual.
Well, I know as far as this part out here, I think that's what they were saying, most of this work, they can do themselves, and go ahead and start moving things in. And how they have to go ahead and do that.
They might have put some lights in, fixed them, putting that wall across it.
The, the big thing with this layout that you've seen, uh, that we tried to do, and I, I explained a little bit to the mayor, is to, um, separate it off to where, uh, that classroom that we've put is, would, I would like for that to be a state of the art classroom to be used by us and, uh, the fire departments may be. And that can be used, the, the courtroom can also be used, uh, you know, and you could actually have two classes, two different classes going at one time, and you could park on either side or the back of the building and never come in contact with, uh, the court, the class, or the, the functions, the native functions of the police department.
Where, where on here is the court, is, with the courtroom operating?
If you're, if you're looking at, if you're looking at it, that, that left side where it says sixty-two, uh, feet five inches, to the left-hand side, far left-hand side?
Yeah.
That's the court.
Step over and show Todd, Ohio's talking about fifty internecks and that.
This is the courtroom right here. They would be the exterior door right here.
So it's not on, it's, it's not on...
This is, this is, this is...
You can see it on that other.
This is the courtroom.
That's right. And what we had discussed was putting a exterior door right here for the general, for the, the public to come into court.
So where they have come to front door.
That's right.
So, how is this layout? Over there to the back?
This is right.
This is changes, modifications you would make in the mayor?
That's true.
This is, this is, this is...
Not the scale, scale dealt match?
Yeah, yeah, this is a wall right here, this is, that one side.
Outside of making existing modifications to what's already there?
Yeah.
This is the add-ons.
If the mix, if the big, the existing, if they use it on the... That's why I, I was really confused.
Just using it. I couldn't, could've had you put the...
It'd be easier to paint a paint hall. This was, you know... 'Cause I was reading this and I was remembering what I saw back there.
That was right here.
That's just, that's just the three big...
We'll bring up later why we need two classrooms too, something.
And I wanted to, the reason I ask that question is because of this, we've had this discussion, the chief and I've had this discussion, I think I've mentioned Mr. Mayor before, but, this is not a good layout for court. And I'm just gonna, uh, court. If y'all have ever been to a courtroom, uh, courts are designed such that the layout of the court gives you visual information to let you know the formality that you need to observe, okay? You've got, you've got, the judge's bench up here is elevated just for a reason, so you have to look up. There's a bar at, at which you cannot approach the judge's bench beyond that railing unless you're given permission. Attorneys can enter into the bar, uh, without permission, but they, actually, attorneys are not even to approach the bench of the judge without permission. May I approach your honor? And that's good because it, it, it promotes a decorum, a formality that we lack in here and...
Isolability.
Yes, we will, we will, we will have court in here and, and we'll call a case or call a defendant, and they'll come up and they'll be hovering over Judge Leathers, who's sitting where the mayor is, and I'm sitting there. They're standing in front and they're actually hovering over the judge rather than standing and looking up at the judge and everything, they're, they're hovering over. And I, I, I understand that may be, seem trivial, but it's not. It, it, the design kinda, uh, makes you feel a little bit in awe when you walk in there and you realize, wow, this is a big deal. That's good. That's good, because it, it, you, you need to promote that, and we need to have more of, of, of that.
And that's, that's the same thing that I discussed with y'all about making that platform and a half moon type shape with the mayor or the judge in the middle, to where if you wanted to have the city council meeting there, it would be the same.
Yeah, and I just think that's, you know, it's, it doesn't mean we're not approachable and you're not approachable and people cannot communicate with you, but it means, guys, there, there is some formality here and we need to observe that formality. Formality is a good thing. It's a very good thing. And I just think that, 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 that design kinda promotes that, and I, I, I recommend that to you.
But there's also numerous ways in, numerous ways out. This just, this is bad.
Yeah, it is.
This, this layout here is like, as far as, uh, for an active shooter or anything that, that may break out, uh, there needs to be a way that, uh, everybody can go different routes and places, and we try to do that on this design.
And you need to have enough room to have some separation.
Yeah, while we've still, like I said, separated everything.
Yeah.
But you can still meet, go where you need to go.
The proximity's in here are way too tight, even for a, in my opinion, for a council meeting, they're way too tight. We need, we need larger spaces and, and, and more separation.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Any other? So, we would love to move forward with, uh, laying this out the way they've got it laid out to, um, you know, I've got, I've had the power cut on, the power's cut on, and I've got everything going over there now.
The, all the lights have been fixed as well, the exterior lights, if you go by there, uh, they slid up all the way there and looks really good. Uh, outline power took care of, that beam hard took care of that.
Need some time to look over?
No, I think soon, we'll get, place partner in there and then they, rest of them do.
About forest cosmetic, the outside forest appearance of that?
They won't stop them, they'll fix what they want to get in there.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, the exterior, we're gonna paint, we're gonna paint it, whatever we're gonna do to it. I would think they're gonna invite a contract on it.
It's not a loop on it, so... The exterior, is that something, mayor, that we could maybe get outsourced on that as far as, but they're all on management, I don't know if I can...
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'd like to see out.
Yeah.
I, I just, I just really don't want to, like, I'm, I'm wanting to...
There's, there's some things you can do with outside of that building that wouldn't be really expensive, change the total look of it. You can do some stonework on part of it and paint part of it and change it entirely.
That, that, that...
Put the sign out.
Yeah, that would change it, that would change the whole lot.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be a problem to make it look like.
But I just feel like we, you know, you guys went over there and looked at, um, I've tried to use every bit of space that there is to use while still having room to grow. I just think it's, it's too good of a building, it's too good of an opportunity not to use every bit of the space that there is to use, even if we have to do it in faiths or however it needs to be done.
Man, I would say, well, we do it in faiths.
So as far as like this part, can make a way to start?
Yeah, that's what, of, of the way he's got it laid out, right, the whole, the way you got the thing laid out, I think that's what we need to do.
Only major thing you'd have to do is put that wall up.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's the major thing, the rest of it is contaminated rock. I mean, if y'all, if y'all give me the go-ahead, I'll, 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 I'll get to work on that tomorrow. I just don't want to, I'm obviously in a rush to get any, I think Angie and them would like the room, uh, but I, I'm not so much in a rush that I, I wanna do what you guys wanna do as well, you know, I, I don't want to.
I think they need to get started on that, I might watch them.
I think they need to go and get started on this and then get that started, and then start on this.
Well, we're talking, yeah, we're back to this recording. While we're talking about it, how you wanna, what, what kind of insurance you want on this building?
No, you know?
Uh?
No, you know?
You wanna do a replacement? Can't replace it for me anymore.
You sure can?
You may ask, that's one thing we need to talk about, 'cause they're coming tomorrow, tomorrow.
He came today and he's worked in on our...
Because, we had this discussion about this...
He gave us a rough call, what, below three million?
To replace it.
I'm, I'm, I got the same problem that guy, I can punch him and tell you more.
Yeah, his was not exact, he was just, I, I asked, 'cause I was just curious as to the replacement thing.
Yeah, I got, I, I use something negative.
Then, that, we don't have to, we don't have to vote on that or, or, I just want you to be thinking about how you wanna have, what kind of insurance you want on that building. You know, y'all are a group that's making the decisions, and when it comes to those kind of decisions, I, I probably, you know, link layoff is, and not covered for the amount that you've been covered for. But, you know, we need to know, we need to, you know, go with that insurance.
You can, you can do replacement cost on it and only insure a hundred percent of it. Have insurance, coal insurance, catch spring, I take that one out. I still gonna stay in value like we did on these other buildings. So you can get quoted that way. You can have eighty, twenty coal insurance, you have twenty percent coal insurance, but you still have replacement cost. If you have total loss, you'd end up paying twenty percent of it. But if you were at three million dollars, as opposed to a million dollars, you'd only be up six hundred thousand dollars on total loss to two million dollars on total loss.
Keep that, keep, y'all, keep that, so I'm gonna put it in form of a, a recommendation to the council, we let the, uh, them move forward with, on setting this up on inside this building for the court and the police department, and the work that they're gonna do, you know, I, I need to ask for a motion to let them move forward in a second.
How much motion?
Motion, James, say, all in favor? Good to go.
Cool. Hand the police department. Thank y'all.
Yeah. Then that's what we agree, then.
Police department, eventually we work backwards, which court members.
All right, I gotta go back to now with...
Police department first?
Yeah.
Get you, get everything you need, ready, and then go backwards to the court, go then go to the court, on the court. You get there first, you get your lunch, satisfied?
But I'll, I'll do it when I get to police department, I don't...
I'll, I'll keep going, do your definitely stuff.
Uh, except if nobody else has got any other open, so I'm gonna go back to the council, keep on that, and pay the bills.
Much to pay the bills.
All in favor? I need to ask to go to, in the executive session, discuss the name of character, uh, issue that I've got. Motion in a second, but being all in favor, we won't be taking any other action when we come back out of executive session, so that's gonna be all we, we're gonna have for now.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Now open in Guen, Alabama, Pig Out invites you to come by and try their delicious barbecue. Country-style vegetables, homemade desserts, burgers, and many more items. We serve a lunch buffet on Sundays, Sunday, eleven to two P M. Our hours are Thursday, eleven to six P M., Friday and Saturday, eleven to eight P M. Call us today at two oh five four six eight zero five seven four. Pig Out is located in Guen, Alabama, in the old Jimbo's barbecue building.
Hello, I'm Chuck at Span Hardware and Equipment, Winfield, Alabama. Uh, so happy to be with you today and would like to tell you about all the things we have for the upcoming spring season. We've got you covered if you want chainsaws, weed trimmers, lawn mowers, zero turn, regular lawn tractors. Uh, we also have a good selection of barbecue grills, so come see us. Thank you.
He's here, owner, operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Conditioner.
We've been family owned and operated since nineteen fifty-four, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial H V A C systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your H V A C needs.
Hey, this is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Guen. We've been here in Guen for ten years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, um, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Guen and Fayette, so come see me here at Guen or my wife at Fayette, and we'll be happy to serve you.
Hi, my name is Chris Nelson, owner of Nelson Boys Paint and Body LLC, located State Highway one twenty-nine, Winfield, Alabama. At Nelson Boys Paint and Body, our goals are to meet your expectations in repairing or painting your vehicle. Stop by for a free estimate. Our services include glass replacement, small and large auto repairs, and we have top-notch paint booth for your painting needs. We take all insurance and can save you on your debt. Come see us and let our over forty years experience work for you. We're here to assist you and to help you on all your auto body and paint needs. Come see us.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guen off of I twenty-two. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, certified funeral service practitioner, at two oh five... Call Tony Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at B S C C dot E D U to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guen to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.